We're about ready to start the regular meeting. Could everybody please take their seats? Thank you all very, very much. All right. Everyone's who's, yep. Let's get going, and we appreciate your patience. So, welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting this Monday evening, May 20th. I will now call this meeting to order. City Clerk, could you please invite everyone to join in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could you please call the roll?
With pleasure, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Hedges.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newsom.
Here.
Mayor Diaz Nash.
Here. We are excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom, and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, please press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, please press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. We first are moving into our ceremonial items, and there are three wonderful reasons to celebrate our community tonight. The first is Public Works Week, and we have a proclamation that Public Works Director, Matt Fabry, is going to come down to accept. Welcome, Director. Thank you so much. It's so nice to be able to publicly celebrate you and your team tonight. Now, the proclamation reads, "Whereas Public Works Professionals are the behind-the-scenes employees who focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to our community, and their work is essential to the public health, quality of life, safety, and well-being of the people of the City of San Mateo; and whereas the City of San Mateo's infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided and maintained without the efforts of our Public Works Professionals; and whereas the City of San Mateo Public Works Division workforce is a diverse, hard-working group of dedicated individuals, including engineers, project managers, supervisors, lead workers, maintenance workers, mechanics, technicians, operators, and administrative staff who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our city's streets, storm and sewer mains, wastewater treatment plant, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to the City of San Mateo; and whereas it is in the public interest for the residents, students, business owners, and community leaders in the City of San Mateo to understand the vital importance of public works and to support the success of public works programs in our community; and whereas the American Public Works Association has celebrated National Public Works Week since 1960, and it is the pleasure of the City of San Mateo to again join with the APWA and recognize and commend all public works professionals in the City of San Mateo and throughout the state of California. And now, therefore, I, Lisa Diaz Nash, Mayor of San Mateo, on behalf of myself and behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby designate the week, May 19th to 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week. And I call upon all community members to become familiar with the issues that challenge our public works and to recognize all the ways, without public works employees and managers, improve our health, safety, comfort, and the quality of life in San Mateo we do offer in the greatest appreciation. I sign it, Mayor Lisa Diaz Nash, May 20th, 2024. Thank you very much. Director Fabry, on behalf of your entire team, would you like to say a few words?
Mayor, through the mayor, real quick, before, Matt, you say, can we invite all our Public Works staff up here, our wonderful staff up here?
Please.
Stand behind me.
We are very glad to welcome you all.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. We really appreciate this opportunity to be recognized. It's a great honor for me to be up here accepting this proclamation on behalf of the department, but it's an even greater honor to lead the 150-plus staff that we have in Public Works, from our folks out at the treatment plant that work 24/7, to the folks at our corporation yard that are out doing the work that we saw in the storms last year and maintaining our infrastructure out there in the streets and the sewers and the storm drains, to our folks over here at City Plaza that are helping to manage our engineering side of things, and our folks here in City Hall that are helping to deal with some of the private development issues that we deal with. We've got an amazing staff that works day in and day out, doing things to improve the quality of life for the residents of San Mateo. So, we have a few of them here tonight, but there's a whole bunch of them behind the scenes that are doing work, and we really appreciate the opportunity to be recognized. So, thank you very much.
That's wonderful. And I would like to invite all of my fellow councilmembers to come on down with me and present the proclamation, take a photo with all these great Public Works staff. Get us all in. Okay, where are you? Come on in.
Come on, Tony.
You gotta get in the photo.
Oh, they're getting there.
Yeah. Travis is our communications guy. He'll make sure we all go. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for the past, present, future. Thank you so much. All right, now, to show the breadth and depth of our community, we have a proclamation for Mental Health Month, and we have three people coming down to represent our community: Letitia Vito, the San Mateo County Behavioral Health Commission and San Mateo County Mental Health Month Planning Committee; Dennis Zell, from the Peninsula Healthcare District Board Member; and Anna M. Pulido, the Peninsula Healthcare District CEO. We are very fortunate to have all of you here tonight. Thank you so much for being with us. So, whereas in 2021, one out of every eight San Mateo County adults likely had serious psychological distress in the past year, from 2019 to 2021, San Mateo County youth in grades seven and 11 reported chronic sadness and hopelessness, 29% and 43%, respectively, in the past 12 months; and whereas every day, millions of Americans face stigma related to mental health and substance use conditions and may feel isolated and alone, going years before receiving any help, if left untreated, have life expectancies 25 years shorter than the general population; whereas while mental health conditions are common across all types of demographics, certain communities face inequitable access to services, including people of color, the LGBTQ+ community, youth, and older adults; whereas mental health and substance use conditions are treatable health conditions, and people who have mental health and substance use conditions can recover and lead full and meaningful lives; whereas San Mateo County Board of Supervisors is the first in the country to pass a resolution in January 2024 declaring loneliness a public health crisis and pledging to promote social connection in our communities. Given this public health priority, the theme for 2024 May Mental Health Month is Heal Through Connection, hashtag SMC Against Loneliness. Ongoing updates are posted at www.smchealth.org/mhm. And whereas the San Mateo County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Office of Diversity and Equity, Mayor's Mental Health Initiative, and partners are collectively organizing activities that our community can participate in throughout the month, including free in-person and virtual events, advocacy days, and social media campaigns; whereas the San Mateo City Council wishes to increase the public's knowledge of signs and symptoms of mental health and substance use conditions, professional and self-help resources, and self-care practices. Now, therefore, let it be that I, Lisa Diaz Nash, Mayor of San Mateo, on behalf of myself and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Mental Health Month to enhance public awareness of mental health, to help end the stigma, and direct members of the community to resources and support for mental health and substance abuse conditions. With appreciation, signed Lisa Diaz Nash, May 20th, 24. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for being here with us tonight.
Thank you. I want to specifically thank you for the, all the details there that you shared to really, firstly, I want to thank you, Mayor, City Council members, City staff as well, and of course, the wonderful residents of San Mateo County, City of San Mateo, which is also my hometown. And really, who's standing before you? I'm Letitia Vito, member of the Behavioral Health Commission, also supported the planning efforts of Mental Health Month, and it is a privilege to be here. It's important for all cities across San Mateo County to band together, really through, to really recognize the importance of wellness and recovery efforts, to really band and really lock arms with our neighbors in San Mateo County to ensure firstly, that there is awareness, that there are, that there's a reduction of stigma, as so stated in the proclamation, and, and really, that our community members, school, you know, in really all areas of the community, where there is an awareness, a greater awareness of the resources, the rich resources that are available in our county. And as a commissioner, I can tell you firsthand, when we are partnering with our community partners, really with the Behavioral Health and Recovery Department, it really is essential for each of us to ask ourselves what more we can do, to really take a look at the opportunities that are there as we walk throughout the city, in our own homes. Personally, I have benefited greatly from the services, from mental health services. When I think about my life as an adolescent, of immigrant parents, and really, the support through school services with the counseling, as well as being a first-time mom, and, and even, you know, to this day, as we are navigating through, you know, certain changes in life, and I just think it's incredibly important, and so I just want to invite everyone, not just in the month of May, which of course, it's a very important time, to really give an intentional focus, but there really is an opportunity for us every day to really take a look at what are the ways we are caring for our own wellness, and, and really also seeing what we can do to inspire action on behalf of others that are struggling. And so, I just invite everyone again to please visit smchealth.org/mhm for Mental Health Month. There are still two weeks that we have, a lot of events that are upcoming, and I want to invite our other community partners to share a little bit as well. So, thank you so much this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Dennis Zell. I'm an elected member of the Peninsula Healthcare District. Our district runs from Foster City all the way down to South San Francisco. We are one of two special districts in San Mateo County, the other one being Sequoia in the south part of the county. I want to thank you, Madam Mayor, for the proclamation because of the awareness it brings to mental health issues. Our CEO is here today, but I'm just going to talk a little bit about one project that we're doing in San Mateo, the City of San Mateo, and that's the Alcove Project. A few years back, there were a rash of suicides down in Palo Alto, and we at the district wanted to know what's going on. We had some consults with Stanford University Child Psychiatry Department, and so, we went into our high schools, and the deal with the superintendent was easy. I said, "We're going to get Stanford University in here and see what you're doing, and we're going to suggest changes, and we're going to pay for the changes for the first three years. If they work, run with it. If they don't, you're not out anything." So, the San Mateo Union High School District implemented the changes. They were successful as far as identifying and coping with the mental illness. We then went down to the feeder schools, the intermediate schools, junior high, many of which were in San Mateo, the City of San Mateo, and got them on board with a, with a best practices program. Then the question became, okay, what happens after high school? Where do these kids go, especially the, the foster kids who have such high rates of drug abuse and homelessness? Stanford indicated that most mental illness manifests itself between the ages of 17 and 25. If left untreated, if ignored, or if parents and family members are in denial, it tends to get worse. However, if there's intervention and the mental illness is treated, the outcomes are very, very good. And so, what we've opened up earlier this year at 2600 El Camino, that's the old Bayview Eureka Bank building, most people probably know it as, we created Alcove. Alcove is a walk-in center where anybody, any young person can walk in if they're needing to talk to somebody, they can receive treatment, they can receive referrals, and so, we're just not talking about the mental health problem. We're, we're doing something about it, and we're, we're doing it in, in San Mateo, and I wanted to thank the city for its help in seeing us through the licensing process and the zoning, all sorts of rules, but, but it's up and running. And it's, if you haven't had a chance to come visit us, please, please do. There's two aspects of it. One is it's stepped care, so those who have, just need to talk to somebody, there's somebody to talk to. Those that need counseling, either group counseling or one-on-one, we can provide that. Stepped models are more efficient and cost-effective. The other thing about it is it's integrated. It will be as we ramp it up, meaning if you go in there, you're having mental health issues, maybe you have housing issues, maybe you have school issues, maybe you have family issues, we can deal with all, all those kinds of things. So, I know you've got a long agenda tonight, but I do thank you for bringing attention to this issue. Thank you on behalf of the Peninsula Healthcare District.
Thank you very much. And would you like to come say a few words?
I just wanted to say thank you for this recognition. We're so happy to be in San Mateo. As Director Zell said, we invite all of you to take a tour if you haven't had a chance, and please tell the community, this is for youth ages 12 to 25. It's free. We're the first in San Mateo County to bring this service. We're really proud of it, and we just want to spread the word. So, if there's any way that you can help spread the word, we invite you to please do so, and thank you again.
Excellent. And before you sit down, I'd like to invite all my councilmembers to come down and take a photo with you. to come down and take a photo with you. And one last wonderful opportunity to celebrate a very important part of our community, Older Americans Month. And Ellen Wang, the Senior Citizens Commission Chair, is coming down. I see a couple of other Commissioners. Anna is here, Tom is here. There's some folks from the Age Friendly Coalition. Absolutely, they can come on down too. Please do. Look at all the people who are involved. Thank you all for being here and for all your work. So whereas May is Older Americans Month, a time for us to recognize and honor City of San Mateo older adults and their immense influence on our community, and whereas through their wealth of life experience and wisdom, older adults guide our younger generations and carry forth abundant cultural and historical knowledge, and whereas older Americans improve our communities through intergenerational relationships, community service, civic engagements, and many other activities, and whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently, and whereas the City of San Mateo is committed to creating an age-friendly environment as outlined in the City of San Mateo Age Friendly Action Plan, which includes initiatives such as fostering intergenerational programs, prioritizing the repair of sidewalks frequented by older adults, and launching an age-friendly business certification pilot program to encourage local businesses to cater to the needs of older adults, their very important customers. Now, therefore, I, Lisa Diaz Nash, Mayor of San Mateo, on behalf of myself and behalf of our City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Older Americans Month, and I call upon all residents to join me in recognizing the vast contributions of our older citizens and promoting programs and activities that foster connection, inclusion, and support for older adults. With appreciation, Lisa Diaz Nash, Mayor, May 20, 24. Ellen, would you like to say a few words on behalf of your group?
Hi, I'm Ellen Wang, Chair of the San Mateo Senior Citizens Commission. And on behalf of the Senior Citizens Commission, I would like to extend our heartfelt thanks to the San Mateo City Council for declaring May is Older Americans Month. This recognition is a celebration of the contributions our senior citizens have made to our community, and also a reaffirmation of our commitment to their well-being and inclusion. Our older residents are a vital part of San Mateo, bringing a wealth of experience, wisdom, and diversity that enriches our city. By honoring Older Americans Month, we acknowledge their past and present efforts in building a strong, supportive, and vibrant community. I wanted to say a few other words and summarize quickly how San Mateo has transformed into a city that supports its growing older adult population. And I was going to talk about the AARP Network of Age Friendly Communities that has, that submitted an application in 2021, and you just spoke about that, the four projects that we are working on now. And in three years from now, we will be submitting another plan to them as a continuous improvement of our projects and a process of continually, and telling them what we will be doing in the future. Also though, which you didn't mention, that this year, there is, I believe, a new policy going to be added to the 2040 general plan. And that policy has to do with seniors to support expanded outreach to older adults and their families. And two of these actions that belong with the senior policy are caregiver support and developing a volunteer program composed of seniors, because seniors don't want to be only receiving services. We want to provide services also. The people who were actively engaged and worked on the Age Friendly Action Plan and have been working on the projects in the addition to the general plan are cross-section of seniors. Some, of course, were city staff. Some were Senior Citizens Commission members, age-friendly task force members, employees and volunteers of countywide senior service organizations, and some people that had not been involved with anything to do with seniors or any community projects whatsoever. Many of these people were seniors, and the others were what I would call aspiring seniors. So let us continue to work together to ensure that San Mateo remains a place where our seniors feel valued, respected, and empowered. Thank you again, the City Council, for this important recognition and for your ongoing support of older adults. Thank you.
Thank you. And now my fellow council members, one more time, I would like to invite you down.
Can I say something?
Oh, yes, excuse me. Councilmember Hedges asked to speak, and I did not.
How many of you are aware of our Get Around program?
Oh, yes.
Isn't it wonderful?
Yes.
Well, CCG, today in the CCG meeting, we're getting another funding stream from CCG to keep it going. And we're the pioneers of this in San Mateo County. Now Menlo Park's going to do it, so it's starting to spread. And it takes away, for many of the seniors that can go in a cab, the problems with the time delays with ready wheels. Ready wheels is necessary, but taxi programs work a little bit better. So anyway, I'm so proud to be in this city, like you said, that take care of our seniors.
Excellent. Thank you for sharing with us.
Through the mayor, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, and I wanted to commend all the work for, from our Commissioners, and also the years of effort from our volunteers who led the task force. I was really pleased to help carry that initiative as council priority to become an age-friendly city. And, you know, and I just had the pleasure of representing San Mateo on a delegation to Japan. And I myself am, you know, of Chinese descent. And I wanted to talk about how important it is, you know, as an Asian woman, to honor our seniors and acknowledge the wisdom of our ancients in our community. The word "old" has become a prerogative word, and it shouldn't be, right? Acknowledging that someone is a senior to us is actually, in my culture, a compliment. And I think that that's a really important thing to make explicit, when we find language to acknowledge each other's differences and the values that we bring to this community, and centering the senior experience, and putting that value into our actual system of governance and in our council priorities. And so I'm so pleased that all of you have sustained in this work for so many years and continue to elevate it. None of you were done when the task force was done, right? And you continue to impress me, and I hope that we, that we'll find more ways to leverage your skills and your wisdom and your contributions through the creation of potentially expanding more capacity in, across multiple commissions, across, you know, fellowship opportunities. There's so many ways that we want to utilize your skills and your contributions, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's all go down and share in the celebration.
Oh, come closer. I am closing, as usual. Oh, well, we have to, yes, yes.
There we go.
How are you?
Very well, sweetie. You're so healthy. All right. Thank you all. Congratulations. Now that we've celebrated so many wonderful members of our community, it's time for us to get down to work. So, City Clerk, could you please read the consent calendar?
With pleasure, Madam Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number four, City Council Meeting Minutes Approval. Item number five, San Jose Student Intern Agreement. Item number six, Gasoline Fuel Procurement and Delivery Amendment. Item number seven, Diesel Fuel Procurement and Delivery Services Amendment. Item number eight, Citywide Surface Treatment Packages 4A1 and 4A2 Agreement. Item number nine, Citywide Street Rehabilitation Package 6B Agreement. Item number 10, Train Horn Noise Quiet Zone Project Service Agreement. Item number 11, Bermuda Drive Utility Relocation Project Agreement. Item number 12, Summer Children's and Youth Theater Program Agreement. Item number 13, Second and El Camino Garage Improvements Amendment. Item number 14, Casanova Park Restroom Remodel Contingency Increase. Item number 15, Police Department and City Clerk's Office Classification Updates. And finally, item number 16, Emergency Communications Equipment Indemnity Agreement.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. Is there any member of the council who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? None? If any members of the public who wish to comment on any consent calendar, now would be the time to make your comment. This is for consent calendar items only.
Sir, items on the consent calendar, if you'd like to speak and you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. This is consent calendar items. Madam Mayor, I have two requests to speak on item number nine, and another hand raised in Zoom, so a total of three speakers.
Okay, well then, let's hear the public comment.
So we'll take the first speaker in-house, Danielle CG.
Can I start? Hi, I just wanted to comment on number nine if we could get more clarity on which streets will be rehabilitated. I live on the east side of 101, Shoreview, and we have yet to see funding from Measure S. And that was passed, I believe, 10 years ago. And we have several roads in critical condition. I was down on Hemlock, which hasn't been done in 27 years. There's crocodile cracking. My street, Shoreview, the city continues to come by and fill huge potholes every single time it rains. We have several streets with fissures. It's really critical that we get funding and support for our roads too. And so I just want clarity on, you know, what specifically you guys are funding here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will pull that for a second.
Our next speaker will be Vikash, and our final speaker for consent calendar will be Jeff Lamont.
Hey, council members. Same topic as Danielle. In front of my home on Norfolk Street, from Lodi to Kehoe, we have fissures all the way down. And I'm not talking about a river of lava running underneath our road, but we have cracks going horizontally across all of that part of Norfolk. It's pretty bad, and my neighbor was just telling me it's happening in front of his house. So we want to know if we can get some allocation to be budgeted for the Shoreview area. There's a lot of other areas in Shoreview which have pretty beat-up roads as well. So, and keep in mind, Shoreview is where all of our central services run through. That includes sewage, electricity, and water. So please help us out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our final speaker on the consent calendar will be Jeff Lamont. Jeff, please unmute your mic.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So I'm just, I'm going to basically echo what the two first speakers said. You know, it just doesn't seem like there are a lot of roads that are set to be done with these funds. So just more clarity, what streets are going to be done, and what's the schedule on this stuff? Because a lot of our streets do need repairs, over in Shoreview, Parkside, downtown San Mateo. I live in District 2, and it's, there's some roads there that need some help as well. So I think we're just looking for some clarity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes public comment on the consent calendar. We can now, I understand, council wishes to remove item number nine.
Yes.
And we look for council direction on consent calendar items 4 through 8 and 10 through 16.
Second.
Councilmember Hedges.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Newsom.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz Nash.
Yes.
The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And City Manager, for item number nine, would you like to make a comment?
Yeah, so for item number nine, we maintain over 200 miles of street network here in the city of San Mateo, and we utilize what is called a pavement management plan to go ahead and work through, basically citywide, all the repairs that are needed. And so as part of the pavement management plan, these streets were identified. It's attachment two, actually, of this report. There's actually a map and a list of the streets that are there, if anyone wants to take a look at those online. But we methodically go through and utilize just what comes up next on our pavement management plan. Typically, it's a 15-year program. I'm looking at Stephanie and Matt, 15 years? Five years? Five. Five-year program to go through with a rotation through the city. So, have to answer any questions or have staff answer any other questions if you have any?
Yes, Councilmember Lee.
A while back, we had discussed the opportunity and need for some hot mapping that would track the progress on some of our infrastructure improvements and allow community members that live in different districts and different neighborhoods the ability to look at where improvements have been made. You know, and that could encompass road repair. It could encompass things like where new trees are being planted or maintained, and sidewalk improvements are happening, and crosswalks are being installed, and lighting improvements. So, you know, I raise this question again. I'm wondering if there's any update from staff in terms of, you know, the progress on this effort, and any timeline that you can provide.
City Manager, would the existing Smooth Streets maps that are on the city website right now, give us?
Be able to provide that? I'll go ahead and defer to our Public Works Director to go ahead and give us the information.
Thank you.
Good evening, Matt Fabry, Public Works Director. We should have information on our website about roadway improvements that we've done. I think the council member is talking about something that would be broader than that in terms of improvements. So we don't have anything like that in progress right now, so I don't have an estimate of when we'd be able to put that together, but we should have the information on our website with regard to the roadway work. With regard to some of the questions that folks raised during public comment, this item that was before you tonight in terms of item 6B, which was item nine for pavement management program, that's one of our multiple phases. And so some of the roadways in the Shoreview neighborhood are actually being addressed under Phase 5, which is going to be going out to construction later this year. So there is a map that shows what's in there in six, and so there are things that are happening, but they're in a different phase that is already in process. But people can go onto the website and see all the list of streets and where they're going to be addressed. We also have the pavement management projects where it's the less intensive slurry seals and things like that that were one of the other items on consent. So folks can see where those streets are as well.
And that's by searching for Smooth Streets on the City of San Mateo website, correct? Great. Thank you. Councilmember Hedges.
So I was, been led to believe in the past that the majority of the east side work would be done in number four. And I am concerned about it because when we ran the committee... And I am concerned about it because when we ran the committee, I ran the Measure S tax initiative, primary volunteers were from Districts 2 and District 4. And I was called over to District 2 by a friend of one of my constituents to look at some streets there. And I didn't see in the map, it looked like that street was addressed. It just seems like there's so many streets all over the city that are being addressed. But again, that the Shoreview area is not getting much done.
Yeah, I can't speak to the individual streets. I do have staff here that can probably speak to more specifics. But as City Manager indicated, we have a methodical process of how we assess what the pavement condition index is for our different roadways, and then we prioritize what can be done. With some of the projects that are much more intensive roadway reconstructions, we have to, you know, schedule those out based on how much we can afford to do in any given fiscal year, based on how much money we have available. And so, there's, you know, a process that we have to go to in terms of prioritizing those over time. So, if you have specific questions about specific streets, I may be able to have staff answer. But I think in general, we follow that process in terms of prioritizing. And so, as the roadways need to be addressed, we schedule them and move forward in our different phases of both our, you know, minor slurry seal type projects, as well as our significant reconstruction, smooth streets type programs.
I just ask that as soon as possible we get started on this particular area, because they do feel like they're being left behind.
Understood.
Thank you very much. There's no other comment, then, City Clerk, could you?
For item number nine on the consent calendar, we need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Newsom.
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz Nash.
Yes.
The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And thank you to the community for making public comment on these items. So, next is our general public comment period. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the City Council at this time. State law prevents council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This public comment section is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to council's discretion and can be extended if council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda. City Clerk, could you please tally the total number of requests to speak on general public comment?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. If you wish to speak on general public comment, please provide me with a request to speak. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. Madam Mayor, we have one request to speak for general public comment, so we'll set the timer to three minutes.
Thank you very much.
And our speaker will be Michael Dillon.
It's another great day to be here. I'd like to, I have to say a couple of things, and it'll be quick, like I always am. You have let capital expenditures crumble into disarray. Example, Joinville Pool, which is now closed. This pool has been very important to the community for years. That capital expenditure should have had an ongoing maintenance and an upgraded budget. And then again, of course, after years of trying to dredge and maintain the lagoon, it takes a flood for the city to release token funds that don't cover the needed stormwater Foster City received 13 million for their pumps and dredging from the state. We're being tossed 2 million from the state, which won't cover the maintenance necessary. Those who represent us don't have our best interest in our forefront. But let's pass a stormwater fee on the property owners to amass more funds. It still falls short. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that concludes general public comment.
Okay, well then, let's close public comment and bring it back to council. And we will go on to a public hearing. Item number 17, General Plan Amendment to Adopt San Mateo's Revised 2023 to 2031 Housing Element. And I believe we have Director, Interim Community Development Director Zachriedal and Planning Manager Manera Sandier to share information with us. That's right. Not yet, not yet.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Zachriedal, interim director with the city's Community Development Department, and I'm joined here by Manera Sandier, our planning manager. And we're here to present tonight's revised 2023-2031 Housing Element and go over what has entailed to get us here this evening. There we go. So, I do want to start by acknowledging the housing team that has been working hard over multiple years to get this document to where it is tonight before you, which is for consideration for adoption. This starts with our housing and planning, staff members within community development, the city attorney's office, as well as our consultant team who has supported this effort. For tonight's presentation, we will be providing an overview of the housing element at this point. We'll move through that a little bit quicker, as this is a topic that is very familiar to everyone up here this evening. We will go through kind of where our sites inventory is, talk through the issue of affirmatively furthering fair housing, and the goals, policies, and programs that our plan will be looking to achieve by 2031. We'll also be talking through our public participation and outreach that was part of this housing element effort. And then that will conclude our presentation. We'll move on to public comments, then to council clarifying questions and discussion, and then consideration of adoption of our housing element. So first, to provide a little bit of background, the housing element is a required element in the city's general plan. And this element does require certification by the state as part of the adoption process. The housing element covers an eight-year housing cycle, which runs through 2031, and is based around the need to meet our regional housing needs allocation. For the overall Bay Area, that was over 440 units. And for the city of San Mateo, that was a little over 7,000 units that we need to plan for by 2031. Of these 7,015 units, we do have to plan for a mix in four categories. Three lower-income or affordable categories, as well as above-moderate or market rate. And also, you'll see on tonight's slide, the recently published numbers for the 2024 San Mateo County Area Median Income. As you can see, it is continuing to climb. For 23, the individual was around 122,000. That's now gone up to a little over 130,000. And then you can see similarly, the four-person household number has climbed as well. Also, as noted, we have been working at this for quite a while. Preparation and initial public outreach started in 2020 and 2021, which led to the publication of our first draft beginning of '22. We then proceeded through the first round of review with the State Department of Housing and Community Development, and then based on the timing, moved into local adoption beginning of 2023. That locally adopted housing element was resubmitted to HCD, and we received our second round of comments in March of last year. And then that led to subsequent study sessions with council to get policy direction, and then resubmital this past summer. Based on dialogues with HCD staff in late August and September, and a number of technical issues that came up, we rescinded our submission later in September and then worked on updating the housing element to address those issues and provide additional information, which then led to the resubmital near the end of November. And then ultimately, over past the holidays, near the end of our 60-day review period, we heard back from HCD, there was some final technical clarifications they were looking for. Once we were able to provide those, we did receive a letter of substantial compliance on January 19th. So that leads us to what is in our housing element. This housing element or chapter of the general plan includes eight sections, starting with background, housing needs and sites inventory, other components. But I think probably the three most talked about or components we'll focus on this evening are related to the sites inventory, affirmatively furthering fair housing, and our housing plan, which includes 52 policies and 117 programs. So, starting first with our sites inventory, it is built around the state statutory requirements, and it is really a capacity analysis. We need to demonstrate that we have sufficient zoning and enough land to meet our RENA plus a buffer and to accommodate all of those housing units across the income spectrum. And the key is, we're not building that housing, but we need to make sure that we have sufficient capacity and regulatory process to help facilitate that production. This analysis includes looking at existing uses, and we can look at kind of larger trends, past project approvals, to understand how those existing uses may or may not discontinue over our housing period. We also need to establish realistic capacity. And we can look at different factors, size of the lot, is it vacant, non-vacant, and other factors that could determine what potential capacity in terms of housing could be developed. And then overall, we develop our sites inventory of these housing opportunity sites that could likely be developed with housing over our housing cycle. It's important to note that this, that not every site on this list will be developed, and there'll probably be sites that are not on the list that will be developed as well. And so, this is also a process that we will be evaluating and updating each year to ensure that we maintain capacity plus a buffer to meet our RENA targets. And so, wanted to provide, this is a map of the city of San Mateo. You can see the boundaries there in the dark black dashed line, and those purple sites are our housing opportunity sites that are spread around the city. This map is overlaid with, they call it the TCAC Opportunity Areas. And so, basically, you're looking at different resource levels. And the goal is, is that we're providing housing in all of our areas with a focus on the high and highest resource areas. And an interesting development is just, this map from the prior year did shift, and we actually did see more moderate resource areas develop. Different zones within the city are now identified as moderate, and we have fewer high and highest resource areas within the city. So, that's something we continue to monitor each year as this map is updated. In terms of the methodology that went into the development of our sites inventory, we started with a methodical approach, looking citywide at all potential opportunity sites that could realistically and likely be developed during our housing cycle. And since the housing element was going on concurrently with our general plan update, we did also focus on parcels within the 10 study areas within the general plan, because in addition to them already being opportunity sites, with the passage of the general plan, there's also now the potential for significant density increases on many of the parcels on our sites inventory. Originally, we had focused on a site-by-site focus that had developed estimates based on each individual site. However, after our first review with the state, we realized that it was harder to look at that list as a whole. We do have over 200 sites on our inventory. And understand the approach. And so, what we did was, we standardized our approach. We looked at key indicators, zone districts, parcel size, key characteristics, and then use that to inform the realistic capacity estimates for each site. And so, the type of sites that are on there, we have vacant sites for residential and non-residential uses, though this is a very small slice, as the vast majority of sites on our inventory, I believe 196 to be exact, of the 208, I think, is, might be adjustable, but approximately those numbers. So, the vast majority are actually developed with existing uses. And so, actually, the focus is really on the potential for residential uses to be developed on these sites. And they could be developed on, say, a vacant parking lot without that use being discontinued, or you would actually see existing uses demolished and then redeveloped with housing or mixed So, the metrics that we looked at to add sites onto our list, really, you have kind of two tiers here. For metrics 1 through 5, if a site met any one of those five because of their nature, that automatically meant that they could be included in the sites inventory, because they had a high likelihood of housing during this housing cycle. So, that's developer-owner-interest, developer-owned, we, this site had previously been proposed for redevelopment, it was a vacant site, or the site contained very limited improvements, small building, large parking lot, low improvement-to-land ratio. So, if it met any one of those five, that was the first step in being included on our sites inventory. Then for items 6 through 10, a site would need to meet multiple of those in order to be included, because usually, you'd need more than one of those factors to be present to create a likelihood that this site could be redeveloped over eight years. And so, that was kind of formed the basis. And so, sites either meet one of the first five or multiple of 6 through 10 in order to be on the sites inventory. And so, then also, once we had our list, then we looked at trends. And there has been some discussion about the exact window that was used. And so, ultimately, we used the four-year window between 2019 and 2023. And the reason for that is that that is most representative of housing, of the environment where we will see housing built over these next eight years. And so, that's important, because there's been significant changes in state law, and particularly state density bonus law. And so, where projects and entitlements from earlier on wouldn't necessarily be driven by the same factors or have the same opportunities, such as density bonuses, waivers, and concessions. And so, for that reason, also along with the fact that right now, we see a much higher likelihood of a project either being residential or including a residential component, and that wasn't necessarily a key trend from earlier on prior to 2019. So, that is kind of the basis for that particular window, for using trends. In terms of development assumptions, we looked at our different zone districts and our pipeline projects and trends from the past four years to then inform likelihood of a project including housing. And so, we did not factor in the likelihood that density bonus would be used. And we'll show in the next slide that many, many projects that have been recently approved go well beyond 100% of base density. But the 90% and the 75% that we established are more conservative and do factor in the likelihood that some of these sites may be developed with non-residential uses. And so, that average is out. If you're looking at all sites over eight years, your average would be at least 90%. And the goal was, these are conservative assumptions. And then also touching on ADUs, because they are a small but important piece of our housing production for, to meeting our 7,015 units. Our permitting trends averaged out to approximately 60 permits per year. So, we put in an estimate of 55 to be conservative. But it's worth noting, over the past three years, we've exceeded 55 in all three years for permits issued. Also, looking at affordability distribution, this is a capacity analysis, and there's different ways to meet this. We have projects such as Kiku Crossing, which are 100% affordable. We also have developer and market rate projects that meet our inclusionary requirements of 15%. We've also heard from multiple other interested parties looking around San Mateo at 100% affordable. And so, there is justification for kind of averaging, and state law does allow for up to 100% of a site's realistic capacity to be allocated as affordable. But in this case, what we did was, we broke them into three categories. Under one-half acre sites, we just included either market rate or moderate units in the, on those sites, since they're smaller. For sites in that middle tier, between one-half acre and 10 acres, the spread was aligned with our RENA distribution. So, approximately around 55% for affordable and then 45% for market, knowing that that's going to average, and that's not necessarily going to represent every single project that comes through. And then for sites over 10 acres, we aligned with our inclusionary percentage of 15%. And then for ADUs, we based that affordability spread on And then for ADUs, we based that affordability spread on a recent A-BAG study that looked at occupancy and the different mixes of people and families that occupied those units. But we do have a program in our housing element that will continue to monitor those trends and look for new ways to understand how these units are occupied, and then we would be adjusting those proportions based on newer data. And then to support these findings, we did bring in a economic consultant, EPS, to provide a peer review to look at our methodology and then confirm that it was aligned with other development trends and activities going on in the market, and ultimately their memo, which was originally provided to the, at the Planning Commission and then included with, as a supplemental to this agenda report this evening, did find that what we had assumed in our methodology was consistent with larger trends, both in the county and in the Bay And then as noted, I wanted to highlight a number of projects throughout the city that have either been approved or currently making their way through the approval process that shows that a 90% and 75% realistic capacity are conservative, because these are all projects that go well beyond what the base density would allow using state density bonus law. And so you can see that with projects like this, even if you have then projects that fall below that realistic capacity, on the average, they will still meet or exceed that realistic capacity assumption. So turning to our pipeline, we do have a significant number of units that are currently in our pipeline, and a pipeline project is one that has been approved or permitted but is not yet constructed or occupied, or a project that received its certificate of occupancy after June of '22. And this is, this is outlined by state law. So currently in our pipeline, we do have over 3,100 units, with a number of them under construction, our biggest number currently approved and waiting to break ground, and then another almost a little over 850 units currently in the review process. And it's noted, it should be noted that this is 44% of our total RENA. So just highlighting, this is how our sites inventory breaks down. As you can see, we do have a path for capacity of at least 200, 10,286 units. And then the notable item here is that with our general plan 2040 land use map, and if the ballot measure is successful in November, that would add at least 10,000 units of additional capacity to our buffer. And as I noted earlier, that's because a significant percentage of our opportunity sites are within a general plan study area and would be eligible for a significant base density increase. And so speaking of the general plan, as noted earlier, it was adopted this past March, and it aligns to really support and meet our housing needs through 2040. And many of the sites here currently have densities of 35 to 50 units an acre, and under the general plan's land use map, could see densities of between 99 and 130 units an acre as their new ceiling. And as outlined in the general plan, this creates capacity for over 19,700 new housing units over the next 20 years. And then just to provide that graphic of how the general plan study areas align with our sites inventory, housing opportunity sites. Another important piece of meeting our housing element obligations is what we as a city can do with regard to production. And so really, we wanted to highlight several projects, Kikue Crossing, which is now, now in the process of being occupied, recently received its temporary certificate of occupancy and just about wrapped up. So that's 225 affordable units that are coming online. We also have our public-private partnership, this bespoke project over on South B. It's a mixed-use project, and that will include 71 affordable units with a target on providing family-sized units. And so we're currently working through the approval process, and ideally, we're looking at a construction in '26, '27. We also have another housing opportunity site at the, at the south end of San Mateo that we would be looking to explore further and ideally find a path for housing there, and we have a policy that specifically speaks to that. And then really, what's helping to leverage this on the financial side, because really, it's property and then it's actual monetary contributions where the city can actually directly participate in production, we have our housing fund, which is made up of a number of different sources. And I think one example outside of the projects here is, we were using some of our PLHA funds to support a small supportive housing project over on Monte Diablo. And so this is where, beyond city-owned land, we can help use this fund to then ideally leverage other funds to support further affordable housing production. And then the other piece that's really important is production of more missing middle housing. And this is really housing that fills that gap from where our affordability ceiling ends at 120% for moderate units and where the market rate housing units begin, and that's, there's a big, there's a big opening there, and production in that zone has been hard. And so we have a number of policies that are intended to help spur more production in that area, and this is a priority that we'll continue to focus on as we bring forward various policy implementations within the housing element. And so now to address our affirmatively furthering fair housing pieces, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Manira.
Thank you, Zach. Good evening, Honorable Councilmembers, Manira Sandir, Planning Manager. Very excited to be here tonight to take you through to the end of the presentation, where I'll be covering other key, important components of the housing element, starting with our efforts to affirmatively further fair housing. As you may be aware, AB 686 passed in 2017, requires jurisdictions to analyze AFFH specifically focused around fair housing enforcement and outreach capacity, looking at segregation and integration, disparities in access to opportunity, disproportionate housing needs as well as displacement risks, and racially and ethnically concentrated areas of poverty. With that in mind, jurisdictions must administer programs and activities that relate to housing in a manner that affirmatively furthers fair housing and take no action inconsistent with this obligation. The city's AFFH analysis is detailed in Appendix D of the housing element and identified several challenges in our city, including that there are racial and ethnic minority populations that are disproportionately impacted by poverty, overcrowding, cost burdens, and homelessness, and there are also discrimination complaints in the city based on disability and race. And it was identified that these are primarily focused in the northeastern areas of the city, which are the most impacted, and that is also the areas where equity priority communities To address these issues, the city utilized a multi-pronged approach that focused on new programs to reduce barriers to housing in these, in high opportunity areas, promoting housing supply citywide, conserving and improving assets in areas of poverty, and protecting residents from displacement. And with that in mind, the four action areas that specifically are identified in the housing element that I'll go over in upcoming slides. There are several other required components of the housing element, including an analysis of existing and potential housing resources, focus on climate change context as well as energy conservation requirements. And the cities, each city is also required to look at prior housing element and identify its, you know, what worked, what didn't, and also call out accomplishments. So I do think it's important to note that in the prior housing element cycle, the city was able to meet almost 80% of its RENA, adopted commercial linkage fees, and also increased the inclusionary requirements to 15%, I believe it was 10% previously, and conducted several process improvements and code amendments to streamline development of housing. Another important and critical element of the housing element are the goals, policies, and programs section, and I really like to think of these as the heart of the housing element, because these really move the needle in a lot of different areas to remove constraints, to identify opportunities, as well as address challenges in the city. And as Zach pointed out, we have over 100 actions that are identified in the city's housing element to implement these goals, policies, and programs. The city's GPPs, for short, focused on, started with the focus on the three Ps that a lot of other cities followed in the Bay Area, including production, preservation, and protection of housing. But the city of San Mateo also included promotion, which focused on community engagement and outreach, and we also identified a fifth goal to affirmatively further fair housing, because we felt that it needed its own specific goal with the number of policies that we wanted to include. So a little bit more on each goal. Goal H1 has a number of programs within it, which focus on looking at using public resources to build affordable housing, promoting different types of housing throughout the city, including ADUs, addressing the constraint imposed by Measure Y, height and density limits in the city, and doing several code amendments to remove constraints and promote a diversity of housing by reducing parking requirements, simplifying the review process, promoting missing middle housing, et cetera. Some of the updates and revisions to this goal since January of 2023, when the first version of the housing element was adopted, represent requiring mid-cycle review of sites inventory and monitoring of pipeline projects and ADUs, focusing on the extremely low-income community, as well as providing senior units, including geographic targets and metrics in high and highest resource areas, as well as racially concentrated areas of affluence, including specific targets for streamlining review of projects that meet objective design standards, this was actually accomplished late last year, and is further, there are further actions associated with that as well. Allowing housing on quasi-public sites, that would also be another way for the city to achieve more housing in the RCAA areas, and then also adding a backup action to add capacity for at least 1,700 new units, should the amendments to Measure Y not be approved by the voters in November. A lot of these programs and updates and implementation actions were updated based on significant public input, including several housing groups, as well as HCD, the Planning Commission, and the City Council. I do want to stress on this policy, H1.20, because this did go through several iterations with HCD. In the most recent updates to this, there was an emphasis placed on higher densities in high and highest resource areas to add at least 1,700 units of new capacity if the Measure Y ballot initiative does not pass in November of 2024. And these areas are primarily focused in the blue areas, as you can see on the map here. As Zach mentioned, some of these maps were updated in 2024, and now a lot of our housing sites are in the moderate areas. However, there are still some sites which are in the high and highest resource areas. Moving on to Goal H2, which is preservation of existing housing that is affordable to lower and middle-income residents. The goal here was to prevent conversion of existing affordable units, using public funds to acquire the units or replacing these lost units, upgrading homes to improve quality of life, incentivizing upgrades to low-income homes through rehabilitation, and enabling capital improvements that can protect against climate threats. The example on this page is, on this slide, is the Bridgepoint condominiums that actually have 59 affordable units that would phase out should the city or other partners not step in to preserve these units. We also have six identified affordable units that would also phase out of the affordability levels and the, at the start of the next housing element cycle. So these, these goals were created with that eye on preserving these units. Some of the updates and revisions to this particular goal and programs and policies included a focus on extremely low-income units in the low resource areas by directing 40% of housing rehabilitation funds in these areas, as well as committing to at least eight improvement projects through the capital improvement plan or the community development block grant. Goal H3 focuses on protection of current residents to prevent displacement. And within this goal, the, the city focused on preventing gentrification and displacement, addressing homelessness and increasing shelter capacity, affirmatively funding and supporting outreach, outreach activities for at-risk renters and those facing fair housing challenges, prioritizing special needs tenants, such as a single female head of household, the Hispanic community, or people with disabilities, and then also undertaking several actions to create below-market rate set-asides. This particular goal had one updated program, H3.6, after, since January of last year, which focused on monitoring rental rates and displacement and collaborating and tracking trends to guide policies and prioritize accordingly. Goal H4, which is focused on promotion of community engagement and public outreach, focuses on increasing access and awareness of housing programs, providing education and information on regulatory requirements, supporting a county-wide rental waitlist, which has actually already been created, conducting public outreach in a diversity of methods and forms, as well as reaching out directly to owners and developers of properties on the sites inventory to encourage them and provide them possible paths of development. And there are no major change since January of last year to this goal. So expanding a little bit more on affirmatively furthering fair housing, as I mentioned earlier, there are four action items that are focused on this effort. Action Area 1 is on enhancing housing mobility strategies and removing barriers. Action Area 2 is focused on encouraging new housing choices and affordability in high or highest resource areas, with Zach had shared in the map earlier, as well as the racially concentrated areas of affluence, which are shown on the map to the right, and they more or less coincide with the high and highest resource areas. Action Area 3 is focused on improving place-based strategies to encourage community conservation and revitalization. And Action Area 4 is to protect existing residents from displacement. So these actions emphasize and focus on groups that have disparate housing needs in the city, and specifically, the Hispanic community, the single female heads of household, and persons with disabilities who experience housing discrimination due to low economic opportunity. There are specific quantified objectives to reach these target households, and the, a lot of these action items are actually spread out throughout our other goals as well, because to affirmatively further fair housing, you have to produce housing, you have to protect housing, you have to preserve housing. So, so all of those actions are tied in a, in a large number to the AFFH goal. So a number of updates and revisions were made to Goal H5, specifically looking at areas of higher resources and areas of affluence, targeted programs to address the needs of the extremely low-income households. HCD also provided a lot of feedback in terms of including specific numerical targets, so now you'll see that those are included in these programs, and conducting outreach to developers and special needs group to facilitate implementation. A new program, 5.2.4, was also added, that would develop a housing mobility program to provide support to tenants looking to move to higher opportunity areas in the region. Of course, the housing element, as we all know, was not created in a vacuum or just by the team that Zach mentioned earlier. It took a lot of public engagement, we received a number of public comments throughout this process, and the community was very actively engaged. We had five public review periods, starting in 2022, and the most recent one being last month, and received several common letters, not just from individuals, but also from groups and organizations. The housing element was continuously updated. You may have seen our website, we have a number of older versions of the housing element there, so there were a number of iterative changes that were done. Multiple supplemental submittals were created to respond to public comments. As Zach mentioned earlier, the sites inventory was completely updated, the methodology was revised, so that it was very clear on the approach that was being utilized, and we also used conservative estimates. We also added or removed sites based on the public input. And a number of changes were made to policies and programs to increase the level of commitment and target metrics in the housing element. The city also provided specific response letters to some of the more recent commenters, because they, they had specific comments and concerns. And then an economic consultant was brought on board to conduct a high-level analysis that confirmed the methodology. that confirmed the methodology that we use for our sites inventory and identified that the trends, such as the development of large parking lots or non-vacant commercial sites, are being redeveloped and are likely to be redeveloped. In April, which was our most recent round of public review period, we received a total of six comment letters, and some of them were in support of more affordable housing in the city. One individual was in support of AB 1033, which gives the city an option to allow ADUs to be for separate ownership. And then we also received common letters from organizations such as the Housing Action Coalition and the California Housing Defense Fund. We did provide responses to those letters from the organizations, and those are also included in your supplemental packet. With all of this effort, the Planning Commission did consider the most recent version of the housing element here before you tonight at a public hearing on April 23rd. We had five members of the public speak at that meeting, and they spoke regarding stronger tenant protections and anti-displacement policies, more affordable housing and higher densities in the highest resource areas, concerns about housing sites exposed to poor air quality, which was also a concern that had been aired during the general plan update process, and there were specific policies added to address that, and, as I mentioned, allowing for the sale of ADUs under the new state law. The Commission ultimately voted a 4-1 to recommend adoption of this revised housing element to the City Council. I want to take a couple of slides to highlight some supplemental analysis that was conducted by EPS. As Zach mentioned, there was a draft memo that was presented to the Planning Commission when they heard this item on April 23rd, and this memo was since finalized and updated on May 17th and is now included with the City Council's packet. EPS concluded that despite certain challenges posed by existing uses, market trends demonstrate that redevelopment of existing uses on sites included in our sites inventory is likely to occur within the planning period. And they based this conclusion on facts that redevelopment of non-vacant commercial sites for housing is a growing trend, there's a strong housing demand, and actually there are higher land values for residential development that make it financially attractive and feasible for commercial property owners, and that most existing commercial leases are expected to expire within the eight-year housing element planning period. And the data they used to support that, they mentioned that the city's methodology reflects these trends, and that site-specific conditions, the methodology that Zach had provided, were based on multitude of factors. You could look at comparative sites and determine if they would support redevelopment or not, would help the city in terms of, would likely support this kind of redevelopment. The land values for residential development have been increasing, there are high vacancy rates in existing commercial uses, and they continue to grow, so therefore the land values are actually decreasing on the commercial side. Out of the 43 largest residential or multifamily developments that were built in San Mateo County and in nearby areas of Santa Clara County that are similar to San Mateo, since 2014, 90%, almost 90% of these projects were on land with previous or existing commercial uses. And then they also looked at lease data, and within the city of San Mateo, they looked at 248 commercial leases and found that nearly 65% of them had a term of five years or less. And therefore, most existing use leases are expected to expire within the housing element cycle ending in 2031. So with that, staff is proposing this adoption and certification timeline. Of course, the first step was the Planning Commission public hearing on April 23rd. We are on another critical step tonight where we, as staff, would recommend approval of the housing element. And then we expect, should the council adopt the housing element tonight, we would submit this housing element to HCD by the end of May. There are a couple of additional steps that are needed for, prior to certification, there is a by-right ordinance that needs to be adopted by the Planning Commission and City Council in the coming weeks, that I'll go over a little bit more in the coming slide. And that would also be required to be submitted to HCD before HCD can certify the city's housing So the by-right ordinance is something that falls under AB 1397, and what it does is require cities to identify the sites that are being reutilized over multiple housing element cycles to allow for certain types of housing projects by right. We're calling it the Housing Opportunity Overlay District, and the city has identified 40 such parcels that were either in the prior housing element or even the one before that that can be reutilized and can count towards the low-income units. There is a statutory deadline associated with this, which was January of 2024. However, since we were in the phases of getting the substantial compliance letter from HCD, we were also in the process of adopting the general plan, we are a little bit behind on that deadline. But this is a required program under H1.10 and will be shared with HCD once it's adopted. I do want to note that this is a separate program, and while it's a critical step for state certification, tonight's action for local adoption is not dependent on this item. With that, staff is recommending to council to adopt a resolution to approve a general plan amendment, adopt the revised housing element for the sixth housing cycle that is compliant with state law, provides a plan for at least 10,286 new housing units, and affirmatively furthers fair housing, and is exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act based on the identified findings in the resolution. Thank you. This concludes staff's presentation.
Yes, thank you very much, Manager Sandier. We're going to take a very quick break before we move into public comment. So yes, why don't we say five, seven minutes?
Do you have a specific question about one item? She's getting time during the discussion.
Oh, okay. Okay. Yes, so back at 9:30, yeah.
We should go and say hi.
One, two, three, four, five. Okay. All right then, let us resume our meeting on general plan amendment to adopt San Mateo's revised 2023-2031 housing element. And we should open up public comment now. Are there comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have received three so far. If you wish to speak on this item, please provide me with a request to speak slip. If you are participating remotely, please raise your hand. We'll give you a second to do so. Looks like we've got three speakers, so that's three minutes each.
Yes, please.
Our first speaker will be Ally Sapierman, followed by Tom Mayhew and Jordan Grimes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members and staff. My name is Ally Sapierman from the Housing Action Coalition. For the longest time, cities were left to do whatever they wanted in terms of housing, and that unfortunately led us to a severe housing shortage, affordability, and displacement crisis. The state recognized that they need to step up in, they need to step in to solve the problem, so they expanded the housing element process to be simply more than just a paper exercise. The housing element process was constructed to ensure cities were doing their fair share to meet their RENA requirements and build enough housing at all income levels for the people who want to live here. If all cities do their fair share of building housing, we will all have better outcomes. You should not pass this housing element because it does not meet the need for housing in this community and for San Mateo's fair share of the regional housing needs. The biggest reason is that the housing element is based on a flawed site inventory. It overestimates how much housing will be produced, and it includes sites that are not available because they're already being used for something else. In HCD's letter, it tells you, you need to make findings about whether the sites are actually available or whether the existing use is likely to continue. You should not make that finding tonight because it is not true. We have submitted a number of comments over the last year and a half, and they've been primarily about the finding that you were asked to make tonight. There are many reasons to think that existing uses will continue, and these sites are not available for housing. And there is not evidence to say that it is likely that they will discontinue. This draft housing element is an argument that the status quo zoning in San Mateo is good enough and that there is no need for rezoning. And in fact, the status quo is not good enough. Status quo zoning is not going to lead to three times as many homes as the last cycle. I've worked on housing elements regionally, and it is clear that San Mateo is not meeting the legal standard to meet its fair share of housing. So we urge you, do not adopt this housing element. It is not based on facts, and it is not good enough for the needs of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Tom Mayhew, followed by Jordan Grimes.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council members and city staff. My name's Tom Mayhew, and I represent the Housing Action Coalition. Tonight, as Ally just said, you're asked to make a finding, and I think it's finding three. And the finding is that the existing uses on this site inventory are going to discontinue, that they're likely to discontinue. And it's not true. I have time for two examples. At the Bridgepoint Shopping Center, you need to decide tonight if 8.5 acres of the parking lot will likely stop being used for parking sometime between now and January 31st, 2031. And you shouldn't make that finding because it's not true. There's a long-term agreement governing the shopping center that says the only buildings that can be built are retail buildings. It says that all of the businesses have an easement to park their customers' cars over the parking lot. And even though the draft says, this is on page 47, that the center is an underutilized shopping center, and even though the staff presentation talks about high vacancy rates, the shopping center is actually fully booked up. There's new tenants moving in all of the time. They announced last year they're 100% full. So it doesn't matter if someone else built housing on a parking lot someplace else in the city. For this site, looking at its existing use, you don't have evidence that the existing use is likely to discontinue, and so you shouldn't make the finding. Second example, 1900 South Norfolk. It's a three-story office building. It's at the corner of 92 and 101, and they're signing new leases that run past 2031. It's not one of the 68% of leases that are going to expire in the next five years. The draft says that owners are considering redevelopment, and that's only partially true. What the owners actually said was that they would consider a three-acre residential development, but leave the office building in place. Calling this an eight-acre housing site is not true because no one plans to tear down the existing office building. The existing use is going to stay. You get to decide tonight whether you want to make a decision based on evidence about site availability or if you want to just try to defend the status quo and not think about rezoning until after the election. You should want a plan for lower-income housing sites that is based on evidence and facts. We ask that you vote no on the plan that staff presented.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Jordan Grimes.
Good evening, Council and staff. Jordan Grimes, 19th Avenue Park. I want to make one final appeal tonight to not adopt the six-cycle housing element. Like many housing advocates, I have been significantly involved in the process over the last two years, and ultimately, the document that you have before you tonight is both insufficient as it pertains to addressing actual housing need in our city as well as satisfying state law and statutory requirements. To start, the element's constraints analysis and resulting programs are flawed. The analysis of Measure Y is shallow, and the program to address it is needlessly complex, requiring passage of a ballot measure instead of simply acknowledging the local measure's incompatibility with and nullification by state law. Even more concerning is the completely inadequate sites inventory, which lacks any substantial evidence to support the idea that the existing uses on a multitude of large sites, including Bridgepoint, Hillsdale Mall, and Concar Passage, will discontinue and be redeveloped during the planning period without any significant rezoning efforts. The city needs to demonstrate not just capacity, but realistic capacity, showing that we have the policies and programs, and critically, the zoning, in place not just to possibly create new homes, but ensure the likelihood of their creation, and we simply do not do that. Finally, and maybe most troublingly, the housing element meets neither the spirit nor the letter of the law in regard to its duty to affirmatively further fair housing under specifically AB 686. Twenty-eight different pipeline projects, redevelopment opportunity sites, and other sites are located within 500 feet of Highway 101 or Highway 92 east of El Camino Real, both of which average in excess of 100,000 vehicles per day. These 28 sites account for more than 4,800 units, 48% of the site's inventory capacity. Of these units, 1,200 are assigned low income, 42% of the low-income capacity. Only 30% of the site's inventory capacity is assigned to low income. So disproportionate number of these units are located within 500 feet of heavily trafficked highways, something the California Air Resources Board, CARB, expressly recommends against. Between 1991 and 2021, the three decades after Measure H passed, the city built just over 4,000 new homes. The idea that we could realistically produce nearly 3,000 more, 7,000, in that in just eight years without making any significant changes to our zoning, which is, as the housing element itself acknowledges, the city's greatest constraint, is, quite frankly, absurd. The unfortunate reality is this: our housing element is not substantially compliant with state law. It will not meet the needs of the community. It puts us at significant risk of litigation and should be rejected until a compliant housing element can be produced.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that concludes public comment.
All right, thank you very much. I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Who would like to start the discussion? Okay, thank you, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you so much. I have some questions, just to provide some context to this conversation about our progress on our previous cycle. I was looking at our housing element progress report, Table B, for our previous RENA cycle, and it looks to me like, you know, while in totality we might have reached, you know, about 80% of the target, when you drill into the numbers, it seems to me that we were very far from the mark in terms of reaching our affordability targets. If I'm reading this chart correctly, it looks like our target for the previous RENA cycle for extremely low-income units was 430, and we produced a total of 49 units, which means that we were short 381 unit capacity. In the very low-income bracket, our target was 859. It appears that we reached 247 units, which means that we are short 612 units. In the low-income bracket, and stop me if I'm misquoting or misreading this chart, we, our target was 469 units in the low-income, affordable income bracket, and we produced a total of 222 units. That's 247 units short of our target. And so, you know, I have a question in terms of the methodology, which our presentation outlined that the affordability distribution for the parcels that were half an acre to 10 acres was based on the RENA allocation. And it strikes me as a disconnect because if you look at the previous cycle in terms of what our true capacity is, which is measurably far off the goals, the RENA goals for affordability that were set, much significantly lower. In some cases, you know, in the extremely low-income targets, we were only 10% of the target. And so I'm struggling with this idea of setting our realistic development capacity based on the RENA allocation when our demonstratable capacity for affordable housing production is so significantly lower. And so I'm hoping you can explain the reasoning there.
Definitely. Thank you for that question. I'll go ahead and start, and then maybe if I can ask our housing consultant, Veronica Tam, to follow up with some additional thoughts on how we assessed and established our RENA allocations. So yes, with meeting our affordable requirements, that's a key objective, and there are significant challenges there. Our housing element outlines a number of ways that we can improve that production with various policy improvements. But in our Quantified Objective section, and this is kind of reiterated within our peer review from our economic consultant EPS, is our biggest challenge to ultimately meeting our RENA targets is that monetary cost to get those units constructed. So we looked at our targets this time, which are around 4,000 units of affordable, of our 7,000, around 4,000 need to be at one of those three affordability levels. And with those number of units, we have a funding app of approximately $2 billion. Overall, it would cost around $4 billion, by today's numbers, to produce those units. And we're short about $2 billion. If you look at the funding structure, how those units can get built. And so obviously, the city is looking at different ways that it can step up and help use local funding and then leverage other sources, and Project like Kikuk Crossings bespoke are two examples of how we're stepping up to try and meet those needs. But obviously, to meet those numbers, a lot more needs to be done, and a big piece is that funding piece to get that production done. So with our sites inventory, we're creating, we're doing that capacity analysis. We're identifying where those units could be built. We're looking at a big chunk being accommodated through private development and then compliance with our inclusionary requirements. We're also looking at private developers that might look at using different funding sources to do higher percentage of affordability or 100% affordable. So that allocation for the half-acre to 10-acre is kind of averaging out, saying we're going to get projects across the spectrum. And so with all of those different project types, there is some defensibility in identifying an allocation that aligns with our RENA allocation. But obviously, there's a lot of work to be done, and a key piece is that funding coming along to help produce those units. And I'll turn it over to Veronica Tam if you have any additional thoughts on our methodology or approach.
Certainly. I think there's important to understand that the RENA is not production. RENA is about planning. It's about sites that are appropriately zoned, and specifically, state law asks that, do you have sites that are appropriately zoned with the development standards and density that's feasible for facilitating and encouraging the development of housing? And so that's really state law on looking at whether it's appropriately zoned with development standards that are adequate to facilitate and encourage. And specifically, also, state law says, if you have a density that is at least 30 units to the acre, that is considered feasible to facilitate and encourage low-income housing. And there is no low-income housing built, I think SAG is saying that, without any kind of public funding. And so the expectation is not that the sites that you're looking for is on market, they're going to be built at, you know, affordable. It's going to have some kind of public funding to go with it. But state law does allow you to count 100%. If the site is meeting the density requirements at 30 units to the acre or more, the state law does allow you to count 100% of the site being feasible for low-income housing with some reasonable amount of public funding. So I think in general, there is no, practically, you have very limited available sites in terms of vacant sites, so we are using underutilized sites, but your density is at the appropriate level. And so what we are also doing is that instead of assuming 100% of the site being feasible just because it meets the density, we are doing, just like SAG was talking about, averaging to be somewhat of a more conservative analysis. The other thing, too, the housing element has programs built into it to monitor your progress. When your site's inventory goes down to a certain level, it will be replenished with efforts, with rezoning efforts later on. That's part of the state law, too, SB 166, to continue to monitor your site's inventory. So the housing element site inventory is not, like, when you adopted it tonight, is not the end of the site's inventory. It's a living inventory. It will be adjusted as you go. And so at this point, the state has accepted the site's inventory to be adequate, so.
Thank you. It's encouraging to hear that it is a living inventory because I do believe in conversations with staff that there are some key sites that perhaps haven't been added to the list, like the Marriott and other sites that may have been on, you know, the previous cycle that were undeveloped that could use another review if they, if, you know, just to make sure that they do meet the criteria for evaluation or don't, and don't belong on the list. So I'm encouraged to hear that, you know, we will continue to update the inventory list. You know, just back to, you know, back to the conversation about sort of the economic constraints for building affordable housing, I think, you know, we're very versed in that, in that fact. And the other fact that, you know, I continue to, you know, to try to educate the public in this council on is that upzoning is actually a way to help enable and facilitate greater affordability and deeper affordability levels. And the fact that this RENA, you know, this, in this RENA cycle, we're not really proposing any upzoning, I think is a missed opportunity in trying to alleviate some of the economic constraints that we are choosing to opt into and continue to opt into without discussing the need for upzoning in this RENA cycle. And so that I want to state as, you know, a continued frustration. And so to say, you know, to say in your response that we're struggling with lack of funding for affordable housing and then leave off the point that we're actually choosing in this RENA cycle to not upzone, given the opportunity and the need for upzoning, and the fact that that would fundamentally change and reduce some of the economic constraints to getting affordable housing built is, you know, to me, is missing a big part of that conversation. That was more of a statement than a question, but.
Just on the upzoning, I think that's where the land use measure that we're looking at for November, if that passes, that's where we can start looking at the upzone in those 10 focus areas.
Understood. And, you know, and I know that we will continue to pursue that path. It doesn't change the fact that we, you know, we do have opportunities to upzone in this RENA cycle, even under the constraints of Measure Y that we're not, that we're not exploring. So, and then I guess I did hear some questions in terms of, back to the inventory, about, you know, this issue of a parking easement agreement in Bridgepoint that would pose a constraint on redevelopment or the, you know, the point about Norfolk being considered an eight-acre site when in fact it's a three-acre site. And so I just, I would have liked to give staff an opportunity to respond to some of those concerns that were raised publicly.
Yes, definitely. I think it's important to note that for a site to achieve its housing, we would use, say, an eight-acre site to calculate the density. But at 50 units an acre, you wouldn't need that full eight-acre site to produce that housing. So that's where you have an idea that you could maintain an existing use, intensify the use of the site, so you could have an existing office building, say, and then use that, say, five-acre, eight-acre site to generate a 50 units an acre, 400 units. You may not need that full site to build that 400-unit project. So you could cluster it on a portion of the site over a parking lot, densifying the site while maintaining an existing use. And in many sites, we see that as an opportunity, and we've actually talked to multiple property owners with situations like that where they're not looking to discontinue all their uses to achieve housing on those sites. And so I think that's an important component of our sites inventory. It's also important to note that a lot of property owners purposely are not weighing in and have said, look, we may have plans. We don't want to share those publicly because we're not ready to necessarily go, and until we are, we don't necessarily want to lose tenants on our site. We want to wait until we're right to go forward. And obviously, there's larger economic and financial issues that are going on in the market that are outside of our control. And those are all factors that we maybe can't rise to a level of certainty with all 208 sites on our sites inventory. And that's where we have to look at trends, where we have to look at all these other factors to establish that likelihood of redevelopment or produce, production of housing in this housing cycle. So for all of these sites, we're going to continue to monitor. As there is a specific program, we'll be engaging with every property owner on our sites inventory. And if evidence comes up that it becomes clear it's no longer viable, it will be pulled off, and then we'll have to find new opportunity sites. I think it's also important to note, we are going to be doing upzoning as part of our general plan during this housing cycle. Just looking at the raw numbers, we are looking at increasing density on over 1,200 sites within the 10 study areas. And that has resulted in that projection of adding capacity to 19,700 new units over the next 20 years and that number of adding 10,000 units during this housing cycle. So I think it's important to know, we are planning to do it because of the timeline overlaps between the general plan and the housing element. It's not explicit in the housing element, but the housing element's part of the general plan, and we do have a plan to move forward with that increased density.
So I have two more questions. One is, you know, I think that a lot One is, you know, I think that a lot of us, sitting in this seat, are getting mixed information. You know, staff has a certain perspective that we're on track and, you know, we're very close to getting fully certified. And then there's, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of questions and concerns coming from community and other housing experts that are saying that, you know, that you're getting the wrong information, and you're not that close. And we've gone through multiple rounds, not having been certified, right? Which is not unusual. There are many cities that have not been certified in the first round, and that's true, too. And so, you know, I would appreciate, you know, your assessment, you know, in terms of what do you, what is your, you know, your best estimation in terms of the likelihood of success of this moving forward in this round?
So the agency, the state agency, the HCD, they are responsible for reviewing and certifying housing elements. And so they're the state agency that we have to work with, and we've been working with over the past four years to achieve certification. And so we've been multiple rounds with them, we've been actively engaged, updating to address their comments, their issues. And so ultimately, receiving a letter that says, upon adoption, your housing element can be found in substantial compliance with state law and be certified, that's what we're looking for. So all we can do is look to the information that HCD has given us to guide where we are in that process. And so right now, we do have a letter from HCD that says our housing element is drafted, is in substantial compliance with state law, and that following adoption, it could be considered for certification. So that's what we're working for toward right now. And that's what's guiding where our housing element is at.
Thank you. And then my last question is, if we do move forward with certification, a lot of, you know, my understanding and interpretation is that certification is in some ways a conditional on our putting forward a ballot measure. Is there a chance that if our ballot measure fails, that we will be decertified? Is that a risk that we're considering?
Absolutely. And I think it's why there was specific direction from HCD to include a backup measure, and then to be very specific in what, how that backup measure would be executed. So, yeah, I think certification is always conditional. We have obligations to move forward and meet the timelines and the programs outlined in our housing element. And if we're not able to do that, we definitely risk decertification.
Okay, so I do actually have one more question. So if we were theoretically to be decertified, in that window between us rezoning for the 1,700 units in the high resource areas, would we also be at risk of looking at builder's remedy projects in the city?
Anytime a city's housing element is not certified, there is that risk. So that's the key, is to obtain certification and then maintain it over your housing period. And so anytime you're not certified, you're not in compliance, there is definitely that risk.
Was your question basically, if the measure fails, then are we decertified?
If the measure fails and we are decertified...
Well, you're not decertified, you have six months.
Right.
If we don't, then, so we're not decertified until if we come through six months and still don't do the rezonings?
We have the grace period before we get ultimately...
That's what I just want to make clear.
Decertified.
Yes.
Okay. And then, so then builder's remedy would only apply if we do become decertified after six months of not doing...
High resource.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that. Those are my questions.
Thank you very much. City Attorney, did you have anything you wanted to say?
No, I think that captured it. I mean, there's a period of time when the city would have another opportunity to work with HCD to make sure certification was ongoing. And, you know, the builder's remedy issue isn't, wouldn't necessarily occur automatically. I mean, I think there's other steps that would need to be taken in order for that option to be at play, but that's multiple steps down the road. I mean, right now, what's before you tonight is what staff is recommending as a housing element that can be adopted, that HCD has determined is substantial compliance of state laws.
Thank you very much. Who would like to speak next? Councilmember Hedges.
So you were talking about Bridgepoint, and I got a little confused because you were talking about 50 units per acre. But isn't it true, when the general plan passes, that it'll be upzoned to 103 units per acre?
That is correct. The updated land use designation up there, and in that, in several of the larger parcels in Bridgepoint would have ceilings of up to 130 units an acre.
So isn't it true that we're already losing below-market rate housing because of the density bonus from the state? Give you an example, the Fish Market Development, 260 units. Our density is 50 units per acre, so we're only getting that percentage of 150 units, not the 260 units.
That is correct, because we are inclusion areas based off of base density, and density bonus units do not have to provide that associated 15% inclusionary. Yes. So if you had a higher base density, that project would be providing 15% off of a larger number.
So if we pass this general plan, it would effectively, in those 10 study areas, allow us a lot more housing for below-market rate housing, once development begins.
That would be correct, yes. Each project, we would be looking at achieving a true, closer to that 15% of the total project units in a project.
So another question regarding the office at 1900 Norfolk that was discussed earlier by one of the commenters. I was a little confused by the only three acres, because when Prometheus moved to their new dwelling in downtown San Mateo, I had a conversation with one of their representatives, that they were interested in developing the whole site.
That is correct. We've also heard from that owner that there was interest. This was earlier on in the process. But, yeah, they explicitly expressed interest in developing housing on some of that site. But I think, as was noted earlier, you could use that full site to calculate your density, but you wouldn't necessarily need to use the full site to achieve that density.
Okay. Okay. You know, that's on an old, that office building's on an old junkyard. I used to get parts there, that's how long I've been in this city. So in my discussions with them, they said that that's been remediated already. Okay. That's all I have for right now.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lorraine, do you have questions or comments?
No, I feel that my colleagues have asked most of the most important questions, and I just want to thank, in particular, Councilmember Lee, for a number of very thoughtful questions. And thank Councilmember Hedges, and I have no further questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, just one question, Zach. There's a buffer built into this, right? So if you were to say, based off the site inventory, we could build 11,000 units of the 7,000 needed, what's the percentage buffer that we've built into this?
So right now, there is variation by the different categories, but overall, our sites inventory shows capacity for at least 10,200 and something units, where our Rena needs to meet at least 7,015. And so obviously, the goal is you need a buffer to account for variation, projects that maybe are developed with non-residential, projects that don't develop. So the buffer, well, it's not explicit as to how much your buffer needs to be, that's kind of that discussion that goes on as part of the engagement with HCD. We do need a buffer. And so right now, we need to plan for that 7,015, and our sites inventory shows a path with capacity for that 10,000, over 10,200.
Quick math, about 30% buffer is what we have.
Yeah, and the key is, that buffer is lower for the affordability categories, and that's partly why HCD really focused on taking the steps for the ballot measure, because the general plan is really what adds that significant buffer, where then we have much stronger pathways to meet all four of those income categories in our Rena.
And for example, using the Bridgepoint example, even if nothing gets developed there, there's other sites that are not in the site inventory currently, for example, using the Marriott property as an example, that could more than make up for the difference. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. Right now, the Marriott site, our current zoning allows for between 50 and 75 units an acre, and it's a 10-acre site, so that's potentially 500 to 750 units before density bonus that could be realized on that site. And that's not on our inventory. So as I noted earlier, as we progress each year and we're engaging and new information becomes available, if a site does no longer appears viable, we will take it off. And then we will look for other sites, such as adding the Marriott site, to ensure that we still have a pathway plus a buffer for our Rena.
So what I'm hearing is it's a living document that's going to continue to be worked towards. Is that accurate?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. I just have two questions. One of the goals, I think it was H2 that you spoke about, preservation. Given how important that is, and given that that is housing that is here already today, could you talk a little bit more about the details of your plans below the policy level?
So Goal H2 focuses on preservation of existing housing that is affordable to lower and middle-income residents. Some of the programs focus on preventing conversion of existing affordable units. We shared an example, like the Bridgepoint condominiums, by renegotiating the agreements that are established, using public funds to acquire these units. We also have no net loss policies, so if a developer proposes a project and there are affordable units on that site, they have to replace those units. Indirectly preserving affordable housing by improving the quality of life of residents to prevent displacement. So we have some policies that focus on preventing displacement, incentivizing upgrades to low-income homes through rehabilitation, accessibility modifications, or energy efficiency changes. We have grant funding that we receive that allow for improvements to homes, that allow people to remain in their homes, and enabling capital improvements and resiliency projects to protect against threats posed by climate change. Those are primarily the kind of buckets that we have.
And how are you thinking about educating the people either in those homes or who could be in those homes, about potentially the grants that are available, the money? Because it's not just keeping the units, but keeping them maintained and keeping them of a certain quality of existence.
We, that's Goal Four, which is that promotion piece, which is, that's really key.
It's all connected, isn't it?
It is, and that's really important, is we want to make sure homeowners that are eligible know that there's different grants that are available, like our rehab programs that we use CDBG monies for. And we're looking to, in the coming years, really expand and push that out to make sure these programs are fully utilized. Because that's really a key piece, is investment in existing housing stock ensures that it maintains habitability levels and doesn't fall to the state where it will get demolished and rebuilt. Because those existing units are a key piece to low-income and that missing middle housing.
And how are you thinking about working with partners? I mean, I'm familiar with hip housing, but there are many others as well, in terms of really getting the word out, as well as looking at opportunities for using those funds.
That's definitely an important component. Some of our CDBG money goes to support various partners in different ones, but constantly staying engaged, because I think the engagement will be reaching out to property owners, tenants, but also our partners, engaging with them, whether it's having annual roundtables, different ways where we can learn what they're up to, where they need support, and then how the city could kind of support that partnership or strengthen that. So there's a lot of pieces that we'll continue to grow and develop, and that maybe aren't exactly articulated in the housing element, but that's part of it. This is the umbrella policy document. Then, as we get into implementing each of these programs, we'll learn so much more about the best ways to support these initiatives, support our partners, and then other ways where we can kind of meet these overarching objectives.
And will that drilling down from the high level involve going out to all those partners and say, tell us what you can do and how we can help you achieve it, as opposed to just drilling down?
Absolutely. It's a dialogue. Our housing team maintains those relationships, and we want to stay involved to understand where are the needs? What are they hearing? Where, like whether it's displacement, whether it's supporting tenants, other avenues. So there's always an active dialogue with our different service providers, with our housing providers, and how we can kind of meet those needs. So there's learning all around, because each one of those groups is really keyed in in certain areas, that that's stuff that our team, when we know about it, it helps us more efficiently focus where our resources go.
And then just finally, what sorts of things or campaigns or programs are you thinking about doing in the area of community outreach that we didn't do before?
I think we're working on that.
So I was going to say, this is all, the questions that you have, Mayor, are all implementation strategies, and we're going to have a whole discussion on the implementation of our housing element and our general plan, and that's kind of where we'll dig in.
So maybe what I should say is, are you considering substantial community outreach?
Absolutely.
And the answer will be yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, then, thank you very much. So are there other questions from the council? Or if not, we can return it back for comments? And are there, is there a specific slide you would like us to address?
Is it the recommendation slide, Mayor? Basically, it's a recommendation, looking for council action.
Okay. Well, yeah. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to approve a general plan amendment to adopt the revised housing element for the sixth housing cycle, 2023 to 2031, that is compliant with the state law, provides a plan for at least 10,286 new housing units, and affirmatively furthers fair housing and is exempt from review under the California, under CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act, based on the identified findings.
Second? City Clerk?
Mayor, may I make a comment before we vote?
Please, please.
Thank you. I just want to, I would like to take a moment to thank staff and the Planning Commission for years of work to get us to this point. It is a significant milestone. It's not perfect. But thanks to tons of extra input from members of the public, subject matter experts and organizations, HCD, and continued work by staff and the Planning Commission, it has improved significantly. And it has been found substantially compliant with state law by HCD. And as part of the broader general plan update, I believe San Mateo has a plan that will significantly increase housing and affordable housing in our city. But that said, today is not the end. It is simply another beginning. And I appreciate some of the discussion we had tonight indicating that our sites inventory is not set in stone. We need to be vigilant and commit to our annual reviews. And I appreciate an update toward a mid-cycle review to ensure that the realistic capacity and pipeline project assumptions are being achieved. And if not, we need to have a discussion about what we're going to do about it, and look toward the flexibility and adaptability within our framework to plot another course so that we make sure we achieve significant housing and affordable housing in our city's future. So with that in mind, I will plan to vote yes.
And Councilmember Lorraine, I want to thank you for summarizing what I'm sure a lot of us do feel right now. And that was well said. Thank you very much. Councilmember Hedges?
Yeah, since we're waxing poetry. So I think this is an interim beginning in making our city more livable for those who are well off and for those that are struggling. I think that when you have areas of the city where people can walk out their door and get most of the services they need, like where I live, it really is a benefit. I have no problem with density. I have no problem with height. I live in an area that was developed before Measure H. One of the prettiest buildings, I think, in San Mateo is the 13-story candelivered building across the street from me. They're done well, they're architecturally, I think, nice to look at. The one exception is the building that was built after Measure H, which is all glass and covers the whole of the grass that they have there. So I don't see Measure H as a real positive, and I think this is the beginning of fixing some of the things that went wrong with Measure H. And so I'm going to vote yes as well.
And the one other thing I would like to add to the discussion is the fact that this is not just the beginning with the plan, but this is the beginning of even more community discussions. And we're going to have a number of them, as the city manager mentioned, and I hope all of us are going to sign up for more than our fair share and learn from that. Because this is an ongoing process, and this is something for our community. This is not something to be done to our community. This is not something to be done to our community. So I'm looking forward to those discussions. I'm looking forward to the living, breathing aspect of this. And I'm looking forward to learning a lot, too. We don't all have to agree. We definitely don't all agree. But I think we are all committed to trying, as that Ballot Initiative research language said, to not only help the people who are here in San Mateo be able to stay in San Mateo, but also to all the people who want to come to San Mateo, to have a better chance of coming to San Mateo. So I will also be voting for this. And thank you very much to staff, past, present, and future.
Madam Mayor, would you like me to take a roll call vote?
Yes, please.
Deputy Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
With reservation, yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, everyone, very much. And thank you to everybody here who participated and will continue to participate, as well as all the folks online who are watching. Excellent. Thank you very much. All right, we are going to move on to another very important item. I see Bethany here? Okay. A local roadway safety plan adoption.
Good evening, Council. My name is Bethany Lopez. I'm a senior engineer overseeing the traffic division in the Public Works Department. Today, we're bringing forth the local roadway safety plan for adoption. So we are seeking comments on the revised vision statement as well as recommendation of recommending an adoption, excuse me, recommended adoption of a resolution to adopt the local roadway safety plan. We're going to discuss what a local roadway safety plan is, do a quick summary of the study session that was held in April, discuss the plan itself and what it contains, talk about next steps, as well as solicit that feedback. So we've talked about this before. You'll recognize this slide. But again, I think we want to talk about where this plan lies with respect to all the rest of the plans that we have. We have a variety of other plans. So as we mentioned before, all planning efforts really start with the general plan. This particular effort resides within the circulation element. And within that, Goal C1, right at the top, where we indicate in Goal C1 is to, excuse me, design and implement a multimodal transportation network that prioritizes walking, bicycling, and transit, has sustainable, safe, and accessible, that is sustainable, safe, and accessible for all users, connects the community using all modes of transportation, and reduces vehicle miles traveled per capita. So again, these plans start from a very high level, start at very high level, and they go down to very detailed, location-specific planning efforts. So again, it starts with the general plan 2040, like we just saw, which implements the need to prioritize walking, biking, and transit networks. We have various plans that define or support these various modes. Some of the plans have competing priorities, excuse me, we have a variety of plans that go through elements for each one of these different uses. We've identified that there are some competing priorities between these plans, which identify the need for the Complete Streets Plan, which is currently underway. And following, excuse me, I guess, a little bit further down in more detailed plans, we have other plans such as the TOD pedestrian access plan, which actually ties together two different modes, walking and transit use. We have plans that get even more detailed than that, which is really sort of preliminary engineering type of plans, such as the Fashion Island Boulevard, Smart Corridor, and Mobility Hub plans, which we've just recently spoken about. So the local roadway safety plan really sits alongside a lot of these other plans and below the Complete Streets Plan effort. The information and the data that was collected during the local roadway safety plan effort was folded into the Complete Streets Plan already, so that's definitely been accounted for in that effort. And we talked a little bit last time about the creation of a Vision Zero Action Plan. And again, the difference between a Vision Zero Action Plan and a local roadway safety plan is that that Vision Zero Action Plan really needs both a timeline, I think, a more definitive timeline, and goals, higher-level policies and goals that work towards getting towards that timeline. So the local roadway safety plan really focuses on the infrastructure improvements that are proposed, but there's broader multi-departmental efforts that are needed to develop a Vision Zero Action Plan with a target date sooner than 2050. All right. So getting into the local roadway safety plan itself and what the framework for that local roadway safety plan is, it really starts at this high-level concept, which is something that's been adopted at the state and federal level, which is the Safe Systems Approach. And you'll see right there at the top, as we've discussed before, that the primary focus of the Safe Systems Approach is to reduce or eliminate death and serious injuries on our roadway networks. And the way that we get there is, again, looking around the outside of this image is building in redundancies in our infrastructure, identifying that people make mistakes when they are utilizing the roadway network and building that into the way that we approach roadway safety. And so as we look to implement the local roadway safety plan and develop that, those key features are included in that. And again, the local roadway safety plan really focuses on the infrastructure components, and so we're looking at the safe roads component to it, as well as the safe speeds components to that. So again, what is a local roadway safety plan? It identifies crash patterns and trends. We use data, along with feedback from the community, to make recommendations for improvements. And by adopting LRSP, or Local Roadway Safety Plan, we meet the requirements that allows the city to qualify for state-related project funds, such as Safe Streets For All and Highway Safety Improvement Grant Funds. So briefly touching on the feedback that was received during the last study session in April, we received comments to revise the vision statement to incorporate elements from the Safe Systems Approach, and we received prioritization of the systemic treatments. And I'll go over both of those. So the vision statement revisions, originally it stated, "The city of San Mateo envisions a roadway network that prioritizes safety for all users, ensuring secure travel throughout the city." It was requested that our vision statement be revised to incorporate elements or more elements from the Safe Systems Approach. And so this is the revised text that we're going to be asking for feedback on to confirm or modify if this is sufficient. And that statement is revised to say that our vision is to cultivate a roadway network that prioritizes the safety of all users through proactive planning, redundant improvements, and a belief that fatalities and severe injuries are unacceptable. And we strive to create a roadway environment where every trip ends safely. And again, I'll ask about this statement at the end of the presentation. And so if you remember from our last conversation, the local roadway safety plan is broken up into two separate parts, site-specific improvements as well as systemic treatments. So for the site-specific improvements, we had top 10 priority locations identified, and this was information that was categorized through the Highway Safety Manual. And so this is objective data that has defined these top criteria. So these top locations are comprised of signalized intersections, so Humboldt and Poplar, Fashion Island Boulevard in Norfolk, Hillsdale and Franklin, Peninsula in Delaware, Hillsdale and Norfolk, and El Camino and 27th. Unsignalized intersections, El Camino Real and 22nd, Hillsdale and Indian, or excuse me, Humboldt and Indian, Humboldt and Tilton, and then a roadway segment, Hillsdale Boulevard from Saratoga to Norfolk. Those next treatments or those next set of treatments were the systemic treatments that we talked about and were, and these were the ones that were prioritized. And again, just a quick reminder that systemic treatments are those that are widely implementable types of improvements. So they're improvements that are based on other crash data and crash trends that we can identify and implement broadly and proactively. So we don't need to have crash patterns or crash data at one specific location in order for us to consider some of these treatments at these locations. Simply having similar characteristics as other locations that have collisions are a reason for us to consider making improvements at those locations. So briefly, I'm going to run through these. So we talked about speed management, which is the broadest of the systemic treatments that we have. And it comes in a variety of forms based on the context of the roadway. So the image here on the right shows a demonstration of a road diet, which was used to help implement things like bike lanes. We see high-visibility crosswalks. And this is really a treatment that we are going to be talking about as far as grant funding opportunities goes. Leading pedestrian intervals, which is, again, the advanced WALK symbol, which helps reduce right-turn collisions at signalized intersections. Excuse me, signal visibility enhancements, which again help improve the visibility of the signals themselves. And they may help reduce red light running. No right turn on red treatments, which reduce conflicts between right-turning vehicles and bicyclists and pedestrians. And then center line hardening. And center line hardening, just to touch on that again, it reduces the speed of vehicles and improves pedestrian visibility. It can be implemented with quick-build materials. And while other treatments that we have on the list here focus a lot on signalized intersections, this center line hardening item really can be implemented in a variety of contexts, including on residential streets and larger collector and arterial streets. And so it's not as focused as some of our other systemic treatments are. And then getting into the actual systemic treatment summary, we talked about the same image last time, except we have the prioritization on this one. And so what we heard last time is that council has a desire to prioritize lower-cost, faster, or more implementable solutions. And so that lent to the leading pedestrian interval coming in highest, right turn on red treatments, center line hardening, signal visibility, and speed management coming in the lowest with the caveat that staff should continue to prioritize reducing speeds around schools and in other high pedestrian activity areas. And so we did also want to point out that while speed management is the last item on here, it, excuse me, one of the main things that we're going to be looking at is the grant funding as a result of having adopted this plan. And when we produce, or excuse me, when we, when we look for projects to pursue with some of that grant fund, those grant funds, we do utilize the context of those grant funds to identify which of these projects we would want to consider. For instance, when we pursue federal funding because of the substantial amount of documentation that's needed for those, staff generally prefer, or there is a general preference for larger grant funds or larger dollars to be pursued. And so in that regard, even though speed management may be last on this list, it may rise to the top for projects that we may want to pursue because we have a bigger scope for those projects that are more, excuse me, that are better for the higher-dollar projects or, excuse me, grant funds. All right. And then the next steps are to continue to work on projects already in the CAP. We touched briefly on those, projects like Poplar and Humboldt, which are identifying one of our top lists, or excuse me, the top intersection challenges. We would continue to seek grant funding for identified projects and request additional CAP funding based on the priorities that have been identified. We would continue to review crash data annually. This is something that's required for the local roadway safety plans. And then we would look to adopt, excuse me, update the local roadway safety plan with the latest crash data every three to five years. So the feedback that we're seeking from council is to comment on the revised vision statement and then to recommend an adoption, excuse me, recommend adoption of a resolution to adopt the local roadway safety plan. And I'll bring up the vision statement here for discussion.
Thank you very much. You took the feedback we gave you last time and very much incorporated it. Thank you. So Councilmember Hedges?
You nailed it.
See, he said it faster than I could. So there we go.
I do have a question.
Yes.
One of my pet peeves is almost being clipped several times walking on a crosswalk with a right-hand turn. I remember we discussed downtown not having, remind me some of the other areas we're going to do it.
Before we do that, can we take public comment?
Sorry. I guess you could.
That was my bad. My apologies.
I rushed you. It was my fault.
There we go. City Clerk?
If you wish to speak on this item and you are participating remotely, please raise your hand now. Madam Mayor, we have no request to speak on this item.
All right. Thank you. Bring it back and close public comment. Yes, now, Councilmember Hedges, please continue.
So we're, what are the other parts of the city we're planning? I mean, there's some places in El Camino that shouldn't be right-hand turns.
If you don't mind clarifying the question, it's to restrict right-hand turns or to implement no rights on red?
No rights on red, yeah.
Currently, we're looking at them in particular where we are implementing, we're proposing improved bike facilities. So on Delaware, along the Safe Roads to School corridor, grant-funded project, we're looking at implementing them at that location. We don't have a specific criteria that we're looking to implement them just yet, but we are looking for locations where there's higher volumes of right turn and pedestrian conflicts, potentially collision with, excuse me, locations that have collision history as well. So understanding that it's a priority tool for us to use, we will be looking for other locations that we can consider it.
Do you know where no, where right-hand turns came from on red lights?
I think, I believe you mentioned it last time, actually.
It was in about 1979, the Carter administration, because of the fuel lines, the save fuel, not safety.
I'd like to nominate El Camino and Third Avenue because I've been almost hit four times walking across that intersection.
All of downtown.
Anyhow, are you finished with your questions?
Done.
You are done. Who has questions or comments next?
I think that, you know, as I stated earlier, a lot of our feedback has been incorporated. The report is excellent. It's very visual. And it strikes me as a great way to educate the public and show, you know, show our work. And it just, I guess it leads me to sort of the, that question from before, which is, you know, we have, I think, across many departments, taken a lot more effort and put more initiative into being as transparent as possible. We have a police transparency dashboard. We have a dashboard for our campaign finances. We also, you know, have the Public Works reference on our, on our road repair and smooth streets program. I think that, you know, as we, as we move to help create more dynamic tools for our community to engage with the city and understand community need, it seems to me that there's a really pertinent opportunity to also show the work that we're doing proactively to solve problems. It's not enough to show that people are getting hit and dying on our street. We have to show the efforts that we're taking and the improvements that we're making to make our streets safer, to make our communities more livable. And it brings me back to the question, you know, about the hot map idea.
The heat map?
Yes, the heat map.
Happy to respond to that.
Thank you. I would love to learn more about, you know, how we are, how we are thinking about the progress we're making on creating more dynamic and interactive methodologies to show the work that the city is doing, the excellent work that we're doing, and also be clear about where there may be equity or geographic gaps and to close those gaps. So I would love, I would love to bring that into the conversation.
Yeah, for sure. And so I believe that discussion happened during the general plan. It was last fall, I think, where we had that discussion with the council just about how best we can illustrate, articulate, you know, just really easy access for our public to understand all the different plans and all the different work that we're doing in the area. And so it's a long way of me saying, I have a meeting that I have to check with Lori as to when it's happening with my department directors to get a status update on how best we approach that and move that initiative forward. It might, you know, we got to start small, but we learn from that, you know, and take the wins and the learning so that we can continue to build upon that. And so I do have a meeting with staff. I have to see which date it is in the future on that item. So I can provide a report out on my council weekly update as soon as I have more information on that and just overall plans, timelines, and all that.
Great. And so, so just to be 1,000% clear, the expectation is that that's already built into the work plan?
No, I have to see.
Or is there scoping? already built into the work plan or is there scoping?
We're scoping right now. That has to happen. I have to see exactly, have a better understanding of just all of it together because I know it was one piece of the general plan that we were looking at. There still would be implementation as part of the general plan. I believe that was part of that. Um, but I'm just trying to see where we're at in the thinking and overall timing and how it would work out. But I totally understand where you're coming from. I've done it in my previous agency and, you know, can see the value in that as well.
Okay, great.
So it's, it's there.
Okay, it's there. It's being scoped. There's a plan to have it scoped and it'll come back to council.
I'll give an update, written update, and then I can let you know when we might bring something back, uh, depending on staffing, resources, capacity and timing. I can at least get you an answer.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who would like to speak next? Councilmember Lorraine.
Uh, through the mayor, I, I don't have any questions, but I do have a thought or two of a statement related to the vision. So if you had any questions or if others had questions beforehand, feel free. Otherwise I can jump in.
We can combine questions and comments, so please go ahead.
Oh, how convenient.
Yeah.
Well, in that case, uh, thank you Bethany and, and those who contributed to this. Um, I, I echo my colleagues', uh, praise for the, the plan and the work done to date. Let's go to the vision. I guess I was just thinking, um, I am, am happy to, uh, discuss with my council colleagues and, and, and yourself Bethany and, and others who may, uh, have thoughts on this. I, I guess when I think of a vision personally, I, I'm, you know, to me, I'm, I'm thinking, ideally it's, it's as simple as it can be and, um, and evokes, you know, what we'd like to see in our city. Our, it's, it's future looking and, um, I, I think it doesn't necessarily, we don't have to necessarily explain exactly how we achieve the vision within the vision itself because the plan will do a great job of that. So with that in mind, I'm just gonna, I, I guess I, I'm thinking, uh, I would like to suggest something that's, um, like, like Samhita designs its roadways to be accessible and efficient, healthy and safe for diverse modes of transportation. Like something that, uh, and I, what do you think of that? What do others think of that?
Say it again?
I like it.
I'm not proposing to, to take this over, um, but I, I guess, I mean, all right.
So, so while you're, you're talking, one thought that I would have, I loved everything you said in the beginning about keeping it simple so people could actually repeat it, right? That's the thing that is most important because then you understand it. What I do love about what's here though, is that there is a very clear statement that we strive to create a roadway environment where every trip ends safely. And those last four words are the most important part. So I think there's a, I would love to see something that is really very specific about, you know, fatalities and severe injuries are unacceptable or that, that piece of it, I think has to be in it. But I really appreciate trying to do simplification.
Yeah, I, I would agree with those comments. I, I, I mean, certainly, and I, I, I think both of the proposed visions to date have done a good job of indicating that we're prioritizing safety and that safety is like, is a huge part of, of the, the thrust of this plan. And I really do like the, uh, the safe system elements. And I, and I think, um, I, you know, uh, I agree, you know, I, I mean, I, I almost thought like my, my knee jerk reaction to the idea of a vision is almost like vision zero. Like, uh, that could almost be the vision is just, you know, um, but I do think there's some, some more in here, of course, too. I, I think the idea of being safe for all types of users or, or a diversity of users is important. I, I was thinking that like part of the idea in here is that we're, we're trying to design for safety and, and so I think, you know, I, I like the idea, that idea too. So maybe it can't just be, you know, vision zero, but, um, I, I, and I, and I don't, I, so I'll just, I'll just say.
So could you have your updated vision kind of be a lead in and then go in to cultivate a roadway? So you have kind of both going, a little bit of both? So you kind of have your bigger umbrella and then within it, then you kind of lead into just the cultivated roadway network that, you know, what you see on the screen? I don't know. I'm looking at a hybrid for you. Um, just, just an option.
I'm not sure I understand.
He's saying that your, your phrasing would be probably the start of the paragraph and then, and then we would keep the remaining, um, language, which I think sort of achieves both, um, of the goal of being sort of aspirational and at 10,000 feet and, um, and then also sort of drilling down into, um, you know, the specificity and highlighting, um, the, the, um, the, the language around every trip ending safely and, um, and our goal of proactively planning, um, and making improvements and our assumption and explicit belief that fatalities and severe injuries are unacceptable, which I think has a value. I think it strikes, it strikes a balance.
Absolutely. I, I, in fact, I, I sort of feel like that's where like the mission statement can be helpful, right? So I, I would just say that, you know, if, as long as the, yeah, I think like the mission statement could, could pull some of that. And so you could have like a top line vision that's like one sentence that people can kind of is, is sort of catchy and, and tries to hit the notes, but that the mission statement can, can bring some more meat and potatoes into it. Like, here's how we're gonna do it. You know, top level chapters of the plan, et cetera. So I, 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 I'm, I actually think that I'll just leave it there. Thank you.
So I, I guess I would just say, and maybe it's just my brain working that you're, you know, I love the fact that you wanted to have a one sentence vision, proactive planning, redundant improvements and a belief that, you know, fatalities and severe injuries are unacceptable. Most of that sounds like a strategy to me. That doesn't sound like a vision, you know, so if you, maybe there's a way of pulling it out and keep, and then say, we strive to create a road work environment where every trip ends safely. That's also part of a vision. So I don't know whether I would just pull that, add in.
I still think she nailed it.
It's sort of like an elevator pitch. So you, you want to have your, your big, high, you know, high, like everybody said, you want to have your high profile one line and then you kind of start getting into the, you know?
Yeah, and this is not critical and the, you know, as I think other council members have mentioned, um, you know, the most important, uh, words are here. And, and I'm, so I, I don't mean to hold this up. I, I appreciate the effort and, um, will admit that I have not come up with something that I like really want to push. So I'm okay with what we have.
So council member Lorraine, you're okay with the yellow statement? Moving forward that?
Yes.
All right then. Any other, any other comments before we?
She nailed it.
Great work.
Thank you.
All right then. I think we are, we are agreed. Wait, 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 wait.
Only thing I was gonna say is, I know it doesn't maybe pan out with the survey, but really finding a safe crossing for, you know, Burrell, um, Burrell, Aragon and St. Matt's Catholic School, that, that corridor of El Camino Real would, would still be pretty important to me and my constituents.
I think around, and around schools too.
Yeah, I mean, we talk about around schools anyways, but.
That's all areas that are part of this whole, whole plan. So this will just allow us to get going on that. So with motion.
Okay, so go find those grants that are gonna allow you to do all the work that we would love you to do.
Someone want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
I'll second.
To adopt a resolution to adopt the local roadway safety plan.
And I'll second.
City clerk, could you please take the roll?
Certainly. Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Newsom.
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges.
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz Nash.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you Bethany tremendously. All right. Thank you, thank you. All right, now old business. Councilmember Compensation Ordinance Introduction. I believe our city attorney.
Adoption.
It says, oh, it says introduction here, so adoption. Yes, okay. Thank you very much.
Given the hour, I'll be brief. The council, the last regular meeting when it introduced this ordinance asked that this ordinance adoption be made a presentation item. So that's where we are tonight. So here's the question, whether to adopt an ordinance increasing council member compensation from $600 to $1,200 per month, starting in January 2025. I won't repeat what's on the slide here, but the bottom line is you are able to adjust compensation in accordance with state law without a charter amendment. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, um, there is a range that's allowed under state law. Uh, and at the last meeting, after some discussion, the council arrived at $1,200 per month. And a few items in state law to be mindful of, as I mentioned last time, you cannot have automatic future increases. You would have to adjust it each time by ordinance. And an ordinance increase in compensation cannot take effect within 30 days after adoption, as would normally be the case instead under state law. An increase can only take, take effect once, uh, we have a regular municipal election, which of course is going to be in November. And that's why the ordinance has been set up so that the compensation increase would only take effect in January of 2025. And this is the staff recommendation. That concludes my presentation. I recommend you take public comment at this point.
Thank you. Is there public comment, city clerk?
Madam Mayor, we have no request to speak on this item.
All right then, thank you. I will close public comment, bring it back to council for any comments or questions. All right.
Second.
Thank you. City clerk.
Councilmember Hedges.
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Newsom.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz Nash.
No.
Motion carries four one.
Thank you very much. Thank you, city attorney. All right, let's move on to reports and announcements. Who has reports and announcements to share? Councilmember Hedges, you look eager to share.
Well, I've already shared during the meeting that, uh, we're up next month for approval for $320,000 for our taxi program. And this week I was just notified, I've been reappointed to the, the Transit Authority, CAC.
Congratulations.
So, uh, one of my favorite places to be on Tuesday nights.
Excellent. Well, you keep, you keep doing that work there. Excellent. Thank you very much. Who, who, councilmember Lorraine, do you have something you want to share?
I suppose so. Yes, thank you very much, mayor. Um, I, I would like to just, uh, mention that, uh, Saturday had, uh, a cornucopia of events and happenings on a beautiful day in our fair city. I, I got to take part in but a fraction of what was available, but I surely enjoyed what I partook, uh, including the Soul Stroll, um, over at Coyote Point and, uh, a, a pre-event for the Soul Stroll beforehand, a Curio Odyssey, uh, where I got to meet Kenny Lofton. That was pretty sweet. And, uh, a bunch of, uh, wonderful folks who, um, are, are committed to bringing healthcare access to, uh, you know, everyone in our city, including those who, who may not have as much access in our equity priority communities. So it was a, a pleasure to be there for part of my morning, but I started my morning at Ryder Park for the PAL and Star Vista Mental Health Matters 5K, uh, which had hundreds of participants.
That's great.
And similarly had a lot of awesome information for those who were interested in getting healthier and being, uh, you know, taking an active role in, uh, physical and mental wellness. We went to B Street at, at the encouragement of, of Mayor Diaz Nash, uh, because there were ukuleles, uh, and, uh, children and, and people of all ages, even big children, uh, got to, to learn how to play and, um.
Were you one of the children?
I, I, I'm an aspiring child. Uh, and, and I tried my best, but, um, uh, I learned from deputy mayor Newsom that you can borrow ukuleles at our public library. How cool is that?
And many other things.
Yes, and many other things. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Any reports and announcements down here?
Um, yeah, okay. Uh, my daughter, uh, so that, just a plug for Al Cove, uh, they call it Al Cove or Al Cove, it goes back and forth, I'm not, but, um, it's, no, it's two A, two L's.
Right, eight L, L.
Uh, so anyhow, uh, alcove.org, they've invited and most of the local high schools and middle schools have now been touring their facility. Um, my teenage daughters think it is really cool and they don't think that about much of anything because they're teenage girls. So, uh, just want to encourage parents that if you haven't checked it out already, that it's, it's definitely a worthwhile resource. It's a great resource we have right in the heart of our city and, um, bring your daughters and sons there and check it out. Uh, the only other thing, it's a little further out, so I'll remind us next meeting, but uh, this, the Humane Society has an upcoming fundraiser in Burlingame on June 22nd. It's for our local Peninsula Humane Society. It's called Bark and Brew Fest. It's a lot of fun. You get to bring your dog and taste beers. Uh, so June 22nd, uh, put that on your calendar. Oh, and then the last thing is, we, I believe, this is right, Martin, we still have an open, um, slot. We need a trustee for our mosquito and vector control district. So, uh, anybody who wants to help, that's, it, it sounds a little gross, but it's a very important, um, need for our city and we, we need a trustee. So, but put the feelers out there.
I'm interested.
Okay.
It actually pays a stipend too.
That's important. I helped write the grant year.
Great.
Okay, we have, there you go.
That's everything. So if we can't get a local, if we can't get a person from the community, then we'll see if we can have councilman Hedges go.
Absolutely.
All right. That's all I had. Thank you, mayor.
Great. Well, then, uh, one past and two, two future. Uh, Saturday afternoon, after all the days worth of fun that we were having all over the city, I was fortunate enough to be invited to the Samhita Rose Garden, where they cut the ribbon, or I cut the ribbon, on two new arbors that have been constructed. And I really recommend everyone go there because the roses are in full bloom, absolutely beautiful. Uh, and councilmember Hedges was there, was there with me. And then related, this Thursday at 11:00 AM, we will be doing a, um, formal unveiling of the Fallen Heroes Memorial, which is in Central Park, uh, right next to the Rose Garden, and which is really paying, um, tribute to all of the fallen in our various military and public safety branches. And this has been something that has been in development for nine years. It is going to be quite, I mean, it is a beautiful, beautiful, uh, site already, but it's going to be quite an important ceremony. So if anyone can come by at 11, I encourage you to do so. And then that day at five o'clock in Joinville Park, there will be a memorial to fallen, um, police officers. So, uh, that, those are two important things that I would recommend everyone who can be part to say thank you. And that is it.
Veterans events.
Please go ahead. At the library. At the library.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's it. I've got it in my calendar.
Veterans event at the library, starting at 5:00, talking about people's years of service in different military capacities. It's a great event. I think it's from 5:00 to 6:00, 5:00 to 6:30 at the mainland.
I would ask if, if our city manager is willing to talk about it, tell us about the incident that had, happened on your ride along.
I think I can bring that up in my individual one-on-ones with all of you.
Okay, it needs to get out there.
Okay, got it.
All right, if we are finished, then I will say thank you very much. And I, let's see, at 10:55, I call this meeting adjourned.